All right. Well, good evening. I am Mayor Protam Mary Ann Edwards. Welcome to the Temecula City Council Meeting, and we are going to call this meeting to order. This evening, we will have our invocation by our City Manager Erin Adams, followed by the flag salute, and I will be doing the flag salute. So would you please stand with me for the invocation?
Good evening, everyone. Would you please bow your head? Dear heavenly Father Lord, I give you thanks for this day. I give you thanks for the privilege of serving in public service, Lord. Right now is such a difficult time for so many in our state, our county, our country, lifting up all of those that are battling COVID. Lord, we lift up the medical community during this time. We lift up the folks that are struggling in business and our residents that have been struggling through this global pandemic. Lord, I lift up our first responders always to protect them as they protect our city and our county and our state, and just give you all the glory and honor. We ask your wisdom and discernment on this meeting this evening, and we ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Erin. So if you'll put your right hand over your heart and join me in our pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, may be seated. And we are in a virtual environment once again. So Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor Protam Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Nigar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Shwank.
Here.
Thank you. So we have some presentations this evening, and City Manager Adams, would you like to take this one?
Yes, thank you. And good evening again, Madam Mayor Protam, members of the City Council. In a normal year, we would have an official here from the Government Finance Officers Association presenting this award to the City Council and Jennifer's Finance Department. However, I was adamant that the show must go on and that this deserving recognition be placed on the agenda this evening. As each of you know, being exceptional fiscal stewards has been a hallmark for the city of Temecula for over three decades. It's this attention to our finances that has allowed us to invest wisely in our community, balance every budget that's ever been assembled, exceptional accounting. We've exercised fiscal discipline by preserving adequate reserves and the ability to weather turbulent fiscal seasons, such as the one we're in now. This effort and attention to our finances is also evidenced by Agenda Item Number Eight later this evening. I think I have a couple of slides if we can put those up. But this evening, I'm pleased to announce that the city of Temecula, once again, has been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA. This award marks the 28th consecutive year for achieving this prestigious award for the city's comprehensive annual financial report. The CAFER has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. This year's award is even more meaningful as it was achieved under the difficult circumstances of being without a key member of the finance team. Fiscal Services Manager Pascal Brown, who sadly lost her battle with cancer last November, had played a significant role in the CAFER process for the previous 20 years. Her loss not only left a hole in our hearts, but also in our operations. The finance team stepped up and stepped up together. As a team, they worked diligently to prepare the CAFER in a timely and professional manner. Congratulations to the entire finance team on this accomplishment. I also want to give special recognition to the team dedicated to the completion of the CAFER document. Fiscal Services Manager Rudy Graciano manages the year-end process, coordinates the development of the CAFER, and is the primary liaison with our city's auditors. Accountant Jordan Snyder, Accounting Technician Jada Schaeff, and Accounting Assistant Lauren Garcia also played significant roles in the completion of the year-end process and the development of the CAFER. And of course, Jennifer Hennessy, our Finance Director, leading this exceptional team. Through dedicated teamwork and collaboration, the finance team has made Temecula proud yet again with the receipt of this outstanding award. Thank you for allowing me to present this award to the Temecula City Council and Temecula's Finance Department.
Well, thank you, Erin, and thank you, everyone in finance. You know, that is a very, very impressive record, and especially now, as Erin said, in light of, you know, financial difficulties that cities are going through. And the city of Temecula is doing just fine, thank you. Very meticulous fiscal planning, and we plan ahead, and we plan for emergencies, and so we're doing okay. And so thank you, Jennifer and team. And if anybody could see that department up there with all of these plaques lined up going down the hallway, it's amazing. It's amazing thing. We're very proud of you and very honored to serve on the City Council where our staff is, you know, so responsible. So thank you. All right, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mayor Protam Edwards, we do.
How many?
Six.
Okay, six. Want to go ahead and read those?
Did you want to go ahead and read the rules?
Yeah, I will. "A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the City Council on items that appear on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For all public hearing or business items on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes. For this meeting, public comments may be submitted and read into the record pursuant to the important notice provided at the top of this agenda." So would you go ahead and read, please?
Yes, the first speaker is Suzanne Lane. "Hopefully, you will agree that this pandemic has no scientific justification. It's been seven months. While the virus is real, the reaction has been completely politically motivated, and we know now that for those that test positive, the recovery rate is over 99%. Please show me the actual science that justifies requiring masks and standing six feet apart and jeopardizing so many families' sanity and livelihood and way of life. According to Jeff Hewitt, Board of Supervisors, it is estimated that our county is losing over $100 million weekly being shut down. That compared to the tiny amounts that the governor is threatening to withhold, if we go against his tyrannical will, is a drop in the bucket. Why not let the people decide? Someone needs to just do what's right. The science doesn't say we have to continue doing this anymore. Encourage the vulnerable to protect themselves, and let's open up and be free. I am responsible for my health. You are responsible for yours. Our founding fathers knew about pandemics, and they also knew that evil tyrants would take advantage of people in fear. Please see this for what it is. We will not forgive once this is over. Please choose wisely. Please honor your vow to stand up for the people's constitutional freedoms." Thank you. The next speaker is Jonathan Chang. "This week, the county Public Health Officer Dr. Kaiser placed the county back into the purple tier where restaurants, gyms, places of worship, and others will be affected by this decision. This will undoubtedly have an economic impact on our community. I cannot say I am surprised by this decision as I walk through Old Town. Countless establishments regularly disregard best practices and do little to nothing to mitigate the risk of spreading COVID-19, a deadly disease which has killed more Americans in less than one year than all the wars the U.S. has fought in combined. Patrons are packed tightly together, none of whom are wearing face masks. Servers' face masks are not worn properly with their noses exposed. Music is played so loud patrons have to yell to be heard to someone standing right next to them. Ignoring the fact social distancing is not being followed, nor are face masks being worn, the science shows the louder you speak, the more particulates you expel, and the greater likelihood of transmission. With this behavior, is it any wonder we have regressed back into the purple tier? My question to the City Council, what are you going to do to keep us safe as a top priority while doing everything to minimize the economic impact? Have you held businesses accountable for violating codes set forth by the state, county, or city? If so, how?" The next speaker is Dana Kizlatis. "I wanted to thank the city of Temecula for issuing a proclamation stating that October is Dyslexia Awareness Month. This is the third year that the city has issued a proclamation for dyslexia. The International Dyslexia Association's mission is to create a future for all individuals who struggle with reading and spelling differences so that they may have a richer, more robust life and access to the tools and resources they need. There are reading programs for students with dyslexia and other reading differences, such as Barton Reading and Spelling and Lynda Moot Bell. There are private schools such as New Bridge and Poway and Prentice in San Ana for students with dyslexia and students who learn to read and spell. When students go through the programs at these private schools, they will learn to read and spell. These private schools cost up to $30,000 a year. There is also after school tutoring at Dyslexia Learning Center in Marietta using Barton Spelling and Reading Program. Many parents at Temecula Valley Unified School District have paid out of pocket for an advocate or attorney for their student whose student had dyslexia or in special education. Unfortunately, Temecula Valley USD litigates against special education students using our taxpayer dollars to pay private their law firms to fight, not support students who learn differently. Special education is operating in the red, and it costs less to use private law firms than to provide services for students. There was an article in Rolling Stone Magazine about an autistic student from Chaparral High School. Google Temecula Valley Unified School District Autistic Student, Chaparral High School, and you can read about this. Temecula Valley has a history of hiring attorneys using our taxpayer dollars to fight, not to provide services to students who learn differently. This happened to me and many other families at TBUSD. TBUSD used more taxpayer dollars on attorney's fees than the reading program would have cost for the student who I was a non-related guardian who had a reading disability. Before you ever judge somebody for their spelling or reading, understand that your tax dollars at TBUSD and other districts intended to, for students to reach their full potential, is being used to pay private law firms to fight, not support, reading and spelling. The private law firms' attorneys sign confidential settlement agreements, hush agreements, with families who can afford an attorney. That student will receive the services for reading and spelling. As of Friday, October 26, TBUSD had six special education cases at the Office of Administrative Hearings against students in special education whose parents want services for students. Marietta Valley USD had no cases against special education students in special education. General education students don't need to hire an attorney or advocate for the student to reach full potential, only special education students." The next speaker is Mary Ann Grozner. "I am a parent of a 15-year-old non-verbal autistic student who has struggled to obtain any kind of education through the public school system. School districts don't seem to hesitate to use taxpayer dollars to hire for-profit litigators to deny services to children with disabilities. Most families don't have funding available to fight for services, and these students need go unmet. I want to thank you for issuing a proclamation for dyslexia. I met Dana Kizlatis through our advocacy. She is an advocate for students with dyslexia, those who struggle with reading and spelling and special education students. Her and I are passionate in letting all taxpayers know that our tax dollars intended in education at districts are used on private law firms who profit from students with disabilities. As of Friday, October 23, 2020, TBUSD had six due process cases at the Office of Administrative Hearing, Special Education Division. Marietta Valley Unified School District has zero cases against students in special education at the Office of Administrative Hearings. All six cases represent both a student in special education and a family in the Temecula Valley Unified School District. It is not clear how many of the cases below are because the student has dyslexia and the parent wants the appropriate reading program, such as Barton Reading and Spelling with Fidelity. Case number 2020-090980 was filed on September 28, and the pre-hearing is scheduled for November 16. Case number 2020-0090852 was also filed on September 28 and is scheduled for pre-hearing on November 16 at the San Diego office. Case number 2020-100509 was filed on October 7, and the hearing is scheduled for November 30. Case number 2020-100400 was filed on October 12, and the hearing is scheduled for December 8, December 9, and December 19. Case number 2020-100233 was also filed on October 7, 2020, and the date for the hearing is December 1 at 9:30 a.m. Case number 2020-100715 was the most recent case filed with a student in special education at TBUSD on October 22. The pre-hearing conference is scheduled at the San Diego office on December 17 at 3 p.m. There are six cases at TBUSD, yet there are no cases against special education at our neighboring school district, Marietta Valley USD. How many of these cases above are for students who have dyslexia and need a specific reading program to get students to read and spell at grade level? TBUSD Special Education operates in the red. The general fund contributes to special education so they can pay their bills. Is it cheaper for TBUSD to hire attorneys and use lawyers than provide services to students?" The next speaker is Ms. Miller. "So the developers will be destroying the west side of Old Town Temecula with 1750 condos even without the 55 acres. Yes, they had a meeting on Monday yesterday to repass Alter. I wasn't notified. It was probably in court with environmental groups and lawyers. Really, right before an election, so maybe we didn't notice. I don't care about your bridges and wildlife tunnels and paths and habitats surrounded by freeways and apartment buildings. Your destruction of this area and its natural mountain bowls of Chaparral, Ambrosia, Blue Lockspur, and California poppies are being circled with Cooper's Hawk and Bells Brio are what Temecula is not about. So many people from maximum build-out by developers. I hear the cries of the paved-over-trees and vegetative hillsides. As the Creator judges the necessity of any more of more of anything, stop this insane, nonessential building. We cannot all live in one area called Southern California until unfortunate weather happens. That would have been less drastically consequential had you not graded the land or deploisted and mined for resources. You didn't win, you council of developers. You moved down further in Jehovah's judgment for covering over a very valuable and aesthetically uplifting landscape. I pray that I can say there are people running to add a voice for the land and reversing any more roads and buildings coming into Temecula. Closest we would be to that sophisticated thinking would be Stu Stewart or Sonia Perez for District Two and Dr. Alicia Wilkins for District Four. Sonia talks about her experiences in overbuilt areas moving here for the rural atmosphere and possibility of growing agricultural projects, which face more challenges as weather changes from construction. So Prop 24 is the project of a real estate dealer, Metargue of San Francisco, and is claiming to protect privacy on the Internet. It is about providing people who sell data to buy more data. Why are real estate dealers and builders of America for Prop 24? They can obtain information on who is buying homes and flood you with more email or paper mail. It gives the consumer the right to opt out and not have their information for sale. And 500 pages later, we may even find more out. So we haven't had enough time to digest California Consumer Privacy Act of 2018 before a new one descended, and it will cost the taxpayer $10 million a year. Prop 15, yes. Think what we can do with billions of dollars a year from the property taxes of commercial real estate to improve infrastructure. Buy farms that are for sale in urban sprawl, to buy land from developers so they can't remove more habitat, only if was purchased in the last 40 years. To repair schools that are under-equipped or dilapidated, or buy big-box stores and remodel into homeless houses, or manufacture emission-free vehicles and place monorails above freeways. Prop 16, vote yes to repeal the ban on affirmative action. The endorsements for this are in the progressive community, so California should embrace equality in applying for jobs and entering schools and not just fulfill numeric quotas. Prop 21, again, lower the rents, mortgages, and leases. The ones who fight Prop 21 are apartment owners or builders because they get to charge more for each unit to build them. For District One, Steve Loner is the only person running for Temecula School Board. He was Traffic Safety Commissioner and could bring valuable safety improvements to the board. Tom Ashley is retiring and three relay qualified choices. We support Edison Kraus to bring a youthful voice to the MSJC Board of Trustees. Temecula Water Board will have a better balance with voices from the commercial farmers, the ratepayers, from non-professional water employees, and voices from the career water distributors, wastewater managers, water purity and water environmentalists. Skylar Temple, representing the people. Rick Williamson, longtime professional working the way up in water distribution. Kendall Stewen, a commercial farmer focusing on water conservation when growing large farms with trees or grape. And for the short term, we have Jen Koppler, has the goals of maintaining the local water table so that we always have the reserve for natural seismic issues. She is also interested in preserving what we have left. All people interested in being appointed to attend water meetings do so of a clear mind and selfless dedication to maintaining a brighter future for one of nature's foundational elements." The next speaker is Rita Louf. "I am supporting comments from parents in Temecula. I wanted to thank the city of Temecula for issuing a proclamation stating that October is Dyslexia Awareness Month. Many parents at Temecula Valley Unified School District have paid out of pocket for an advocate or attorney for their student whose student has dyslexia or in special education. Unfortunately, Temecula Valley Unified School District litigates against special education students using our taxpayer dollars to pay private law firms to fight, not support, students who learn differently. I very much appreciate the opportunity to comment and share how our family has been victimized by some of the law firms that your school district contracts with. I was involved in a litigation in some of the law firms, Temecula District hires. It lasted seven years. Attorneys litigated all the way to the Ninth Circuit of Appeals to deny my child special education services. They lost, but they built the district for every single minute throughout the seven years. Now amid the coronavirus outbreak, another of the Temecula District vendors, the law firm of Fagan, Friedman, and Full Frost, is suing children with disabilities. FFF has filed a myriad of legal actions to deny services to children with disabilities during the coronavirus outbreak. While most of the instances I am aware of are in San Bernardino County, the issue remains the same for Riverside County and the Temecula School District, namely county funds are being utilized to pay for litigation to deny special education services to students with disabilities rather than to fund teachers or paraprofessionals to help these kids. On March 18, while our state was under stay-at-home orders, FFF sued our family for $12,000, arguing they are due the money they needlessly spent on hiring private investigators to conduct surveillance of our family's attorney and private tutor. In March 2018, the Upland Unified School Board voted unanimously to settle the case and give my daughter needed services, but yet FFF continued to pursue litigation without any board approval. Public records show that the firm spent over $124,000 in an eight-month period to litigate but $0 to actually provide the services to the student, which is what the school board had approved. The law firm hired private investigators to do surveillance on the student's attorneys and private tutors. The surveillance the district paid for with education tax dollars included surveillance at the home, comprehensive background, establishing whereabouts, locating picture of the subject, research of social media, verifying property ownership, and DMV vehicle registration and verification. All listed by the request for reading instruction and related services. Recently, a federal judge ruled that the Manhattan Beach School District was in violation of federal special education law because they followed the advice of Chris Fernandez of FFF. The name of the case is BH versus Manhattan Beach Unified School District. The Upland District has already been found in violation by the Ninth Circuit several years ago for following bad legal advice. Please look into how lawyers are misusing your tax dollars and spend your money on teachers, not lawyers. In some districts, some of the expenditures for legal services are being coded as instruction-related expense or computer repairs. Adversarial relationships lower property values because families do not want to buy a home in a bad school district. As of Friday, October 26, TBUSD had six special education cases at the Office of Administrative Hearing, cases against students in special education whose parents want services for students. #MoreTeachersLeftLawyers. And Mayor Protam Edwards, that was the last comment.
All right, thank you. So that takes us on to City Council reports. So does anybody, Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protam. Mr. City Manager, if you, let me back up. I'm very sensitive to those comments that come in regarding the school district. Of course, everybody knows that we have no purview over the school district, yet I think that it's important that school board members know that the City Council is getting these type of comments. Can you please send those to the school district, address to the board members, and CC the City Council so that they at least know that we have citizens attending our council meetings who are complaining about these things? Again, it's in their purview. I am going to refrain from making any specific comment. Every case is different, but they need to know that the City Council is getting these comments. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We'll share those with the board and the superintendent.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Anybody? Matt? Zach? No?
No, thanks.
All right. Then we are going to move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed in a consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve action minutes of October 13, 2020. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve city treasurer's report as of August 31, 2020. Number five, approve fourth amended and restated joint powers agreement for the Southwest Community's Financing Authority, which is the animal shelter. And I will accept a motion if anybody doesn't want to pull any of these.
I'll move consent.
Okay.
Director.
Motion and second. All right, would you like to have a roll call vote, please? Aye.
I can't hear. I think you-
You're muted.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Shwank?
Aye.
All right, thank you. So now I'm going to recess the City Council meeting to the scheduled meetings of the Temecula Community Services District, the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the Temecula Housing Authority, and/or Temecula Public Financing Authority. So-
Thank you very much, Mayor Protam. I'll call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, since we're in the virtual setting, would you please call the roll again?
Yes, Director Edwards?
Aye. I'm in here.
Director Nigar?
Here.
Director Ron?
I'm here.
President Shwank?
And I'm here. Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll dispense with the reading of the rolls and move on to our consent calendar. We have one item. Approve action min- oh, I better read the rules first. "All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action." Item Number Six is approve action minutes of October 13, 2020.
Move approval.
A motion and second?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Would you please take the roll call vote?
Yes, Director Edwards?
Aye.
Director Nigar?
Aye.
Director Ron?
Aye.
President Shwank?
Aye. Thank you very much. Passes 4-0. We will move on to our directors' report. Director Hawkins, do we have anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Well, thank you very much, sir. General Matters Report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Right. Any board of directors have anything?
I have one thing.
Sure, go ahead.
You know, I just want to take a moment and throw some thanks out to your department, Mr. Hawkins, and everything that's working, who's working for you. You know, you guys held a drive-in movie last Sunday, and it was a little bit rainy, but you know, it was indicative of what your department is doing under just tremendous circumstances with COVID, finding a way where there is no way. So just keep doing it. I wanted to pass on the thanks to everybody, all of your virtual activities and all of this. It doesn't go unnoticed, and just thank you. The community needs it.
That's very kind, Mike. I really appreciate it. And I know the team is tuning in here. Erin and I joke a lot, too. It's kind of, the World Series is on in everyone's background right now, too. And we talk about all the events that we normally do, our home runs, but in a COVID environment, you know, we have to hit singles and single-score runs, too. So as long as we're in the game, as you say, we're pleased, and we can't wait until we get back to some sense of normalcy and we can put on some events and programs and activities. So thank you.
You're welcome. Nothing more, Mr. President.
Thank you. Dr. Ron, anything? All right. Director Hawkins, we'll take those singles, and we'll hold on for a dinger in a few months, huh? Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move adjournment to our next scheduled meeting for November 10. We are adjourned.
Thank you. And I'm going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting and going on to Business Item Number Seven. Introduce ordinance amending Chapter 8.20 of the municipal code to include provisions regarding recyclables and organics collection. So can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, and good evening, Mayor Protam Edwards and councilmembers. I'm going to share my screen and bring up a PowerPoint presentation, very brief. So as you mentioned, the ordinance before you tonight is intended to codify some state legislation that has been passed over the last few years regarding mandatory commercial or business recycling and mandatory commercial organics recycling. So the two pieces of state legislation I'm referring to, the first, AB 341, which was passed in July of 2012, established the requirement that commercial businesses generating four cubic yards or more of solid waste per week, or multifamily residential with five or more dwelling units, shall arrange for recycling services- or multifamily residential, uh, with five or more dwelling units shall arrange for recycling services. And again, that was passed in two thousand twelve. Uh, the vast majority of commercial businesses and multifamily units in Temecula are in compliance with this legislation uh, and do subscribe to recycling services through CRNR, our franchise waste hauler. Uh, this ordinance, uh, basically just codifies this requirement into our municipal code. The second piece of legislation is AB eighteen twenty-six. And that legislation was first passed by the state, uh, California in April of two thousand sixteen. And at that time, it required that businesses that generate eight cubic yards or more of organic waste per week must recycle their organic waste. The legislation was changed in January of two thousand seventeen to require those businesses that generate four cubic yards or more of organic waste recycle that material. And then again, in two thousand nineteen, it was changed to require commercial businesses or multifamily units that generate four cubic yards or more of general commercial solid waste to recycle their organic, uh, waste material. And again, most recently in October of this year, it was changed even further to require those commercial businesses to generate as little as two cubic yards or more of solid waste to recycle their organic materials. So this ordinance codifies this requirement to recycle both just general recyclable materials as well as organic recyclable materials. Uh, the, uh, the legislation's been in effect for a few years regarding the organics recycling. And, uh, a number of businesses in, uh, the city are subscribing to this organic recycling services through CRNR, but a number are not. And so what we are proposing that over the next year, we would be uh, pursuing the remainder of these businesses that are not recycling organic materials to come into compliance with this legislation and would be in compliance with, with the municipal code once this is codified into our code. There are a couple of, uh, other options for businesses that, uh, either choose to not recycle their material or their organic waste. Uh, one of those is to be a self-hauler. So businesses, they must separate their recycling materials and organic material, but they're allowed to, uh, haul that material to a, a recycler or an organic, uh, recycling facility on their own. And they are, would be then qualified as a, a self-hauler. They are required to keep records of the material that they recycle, um, and make those records available to the city, but they can, uh, fall under that, uh, classification as a self-hauler. One of the other, uh, options or allowances is that businesses can apply for an exemption to this requirement. And here are the categories of exemptions that would potentially apply. One is that they would have no recycled material generated at their facility. Two is that they, uh, have inadequate storage space to store the recycled materials. And three, that there's no viable market for the recycled materials at the recycling facility. So if businesses, uh, choose to pursue an exemption, they can apply for that exemption and submit an application to the city. And we do have a number of businesses that have applied for and been approved for this exemption. So in addition to adopting this ordinance to, uh, uh, codify the mandatory commercial recycling and organics recycling, CalRecycle, the department at the state that oversees this program, also required that we adopt an implementation plan in order to gain compliance with these requirements to the greatest extent possible. One of those measures in the implementation plan is what you're doing this evening is adopting this ordinance. This will be the first reading of the ordinance, and there will be a second reading, and then that would become effective thirty days after your second reading. Uh, a second measure is that businesses that are not in compliance or now recycling their materials would be given notice that they are not in compliance with this legislation. And that process is under, underway. Both the city and CRNR have been notifying all their customers and, uh, attempting to, uh, gain, uh, compliance with this legislation. Uh, what we've, uh, intended is that the businesses that are not in compliance would, uh, be visited by CRNR over the next year, and they would be visiting approximately fifty-five businesses a month in order to visit all of those businesses that are not in compliance by the end of next year. With the goal of attempting to gain a hundred percent compliance, uh, for all of our businesses by the end of two thousand and twenty-one. Also, as part of this implementation plan and by codifying this requirement, the city would be able to enforce this requirement through, uh, the violation provisions within our municipal code, if that becomes necessary. So that concludes staff presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? You did such a good job, Pat. There's not a question.
Okay.
All right, then. Um, do we need to read the ordinance before we vote?
Yes, and Mayor Protam Edwards, for the record, there were no comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So, um, who wants to read it? Peter?
Sure, I'll read it. Um, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula, amending chapter eight point two zero of the municipal code to include provisions regarding recyclables and organics collection.
All right, so I need a motion and a second.
I'm moved.
And?
Second.
Okay, so could we have the roll call, please, for votes?
Yes. Mayor Protam Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And now we'll move on to the joint meeting of the city council and the community services district business. Okay, so could I have a staff report, please? This is approval, approved fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget adjustments.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, city council members.
Congratulations again, Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you very much for those comments earlier. That was, uh, uh, very much appreciated. Um, you know, it, it was a rough year and staff really worked hard, came together and, and did a great job. So I'm really, really proud.
Well deserved.
All right. Can you see the presentation?
Got it.
Great. All right, so if you guys recall, back when we presented the adopted budget in June, we committed to revisit our assumptions in the October timeframe. And more information on the economic effects of the pandemic are available. So tonight, we're going to review the year-end results from fiscal year nineteen twenty and recommended adjustments to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one adopted budget. When developing the revenue projections in the spring, many assumptions were used to estimate the impact that COVID would have on the local economy. At that time, we projected a loss of nearly fifteen million dollars across the city's major revenue sources, with Measure S and Measure, Measure S and sales tax were impacted the most. Now that we've closed the books, the results were much less devastating than originally expected with an actual loss of just over, or just under, excuse me, five point two million. The three major revenues that did much better than projected were sales tax with a loss of two point seven million versus the six point six million projected. And Measure S came in five hundred and twelve thousand below the mid-year budget versus a projected loss of five point three million. And Measure A actually exceeded budget projections and came in four hundred thirteen thousand more favorable. These three revenue sources, uh, directly follow consumer spending patterns and exceeded expectations statewide for a variety of reasons. With unemployment rates at an all-time high, it was found that the majority of those affected were in lower wage earners, were lower wage earners and from the service sector, who produce a lesser share of the sales tax and Measure S revenue. The sector of workers who remained employed and telecommuted actually had an increase in their disposable income due to less spending on commuting, entertainment, and travel. And low interest, low interest rates and favorable lending practices led to investments in home improvements, new automobiles, and recreation vehicles, as well as increased online shopping. With more favorable revenue combined with less expenditure activity than projected, the general fund closed the year with just over thirty-two point five million dollars in fund balance, exceeding budget projections by nine point six million dollars, creating a general fund surplus. Oops. Management has thoroughly reviewed revenues and expenditures and updated our assumptions, given we've had several months of experience with COVID and its impacts. It's recommended that the nine point six million dollar surplus be appropriated in accordance with budget policy guidelines to restore reserve balances first. Under our original projections, the use of general fund secondary reserve was necessary to balance both fiscal years twenty twenty-one and twenty-one twenty-two. Per budget policy, it's also recommended that we contribute two million dollars towards the pension trust, which will be used to offset the increase in CalPERS retirement rates expected over the next decade. Over one point three million is recommended to fund prior commitments made for purchase orders, capital projects, and grant-funded programs. And it's recommended that we restore the asset replacement contributions, departmental training budgets, the storm drain inlet filter replacement program necessary to meet state mandates, and fund one of the three positions that were frozen as part of the budget reduction measures reflected in the adopted budget. A number of revenue assumptions have been updated to reflect new information we've, we've received since the budget was adopted. Sales tax includes an increase of two point two million dollars to align with the city's sales tax consultant projections for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, which were recently updated to reflect consumer behavior seen during the early stages of the pandemic. Property tax includes an increase of three hundred ninety-eight thousand to align with information received from the city's consultants and the county. Franchise fees reflects a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase due to late payment received for the prior year, which will be recorded in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And finally, the city received just over one point three million dollars in Federal CARES Act funding as reimbursement for a portion of the city's COVID-related expenditures. Fiscal year twenty twenty-one ending general fund balance is now projected to be twenty-eight point eight million versus the nineteen point five million, as noted in the adopted budget. With more favorable revenue projected, the general fund five-year forecast is now balanced in all five years and reserves are fully funded each year. As noted in the beginning slides, Measure S revenue exceeded projections by four point five million dollars for fiscal year nineteen twenty. It's recommended that the council program the surplus in accordance with the Measure S appropriation guidelines outlined in the city's budget policies, which prioritizes public safety, asset management, capital projects, then general services. It's recommended to restore the three million dollar in deposits into the street maintenance, fleet, and technology replacement funds, which were reduced in order to balance the adopted budget. The bids received for the Margarita Recreation Center project have exceeded the budget estimates by two million dollars. So it's recommended that one point four million of Measure S and six hundred thousand of available development impact fees be appropriated to complete this heavily desired community center. Additionally, funding for the CRC Splash Pad and Shade Structure Project is recommended to be moved up from fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four to the current fiscal year. And funding for the CRC renovation project is recommended to be accelerated from year five to year three of the current CIP. TCSD has undoubtedly been the hardest-hit department during this pandemic and has closed facilities, canceled programs and events, and unfortunately has had to lay off the majority of its workforce. When the adopted budget was developed in the April, March, April timeframe, the duration of the stayed-home orders and facility closures were unknown. For budgeting purposes, we assume that TCSD would resume a normal level of operations beginning July first. But now that we're in the eighth, eighth month of sustained closures with an unknown end date, budget assumptions have been changed to reflect a gradual reopening beginning in January of two thousand twenty-one. TCSD revenues and expenditures reflect these reductions for the first half of the fiscal year. And the assumptions will again be revisited as part of our mid-year budget update in February. The capital improvement program includes revisions to four capital projects. The first of which is the Yenez Road Improvement Project, which is recommended to be segregated into two phases. With phase one reflecting the widening of the road between Rancho Vista Road towards Rancho Cal, this segment reflects a new appropriation of two million dollars in development impact fee funds and is expected to be completed in two thousand twenty-two. Phase two reflects the widening of Yenez from Rancho Vista to La Paz. The construction of this brought, project has been pushed out to year five of the CIP and cannot be, cannot begin until a funding source is identified. And as mentioned on the earlier Measure S slide, funding is recommended to be accelerated for both the CRC renovation and the CRC Splash Pad Shade Structure projects, as well as an additional appropriation of two million for the completion of the Margarita Recreation Center. When the state imposed further shutdowns after a brief reopening in the summertime, the city manager imposed a hiring freeze in an abundance of caution as the economic impacts from the March through June timeframe were not yet known. With the more favorable results than expected in sales tax, the city manager is now comfortable authorizing the recruitment of nine of the fifteen current vacant authorized positions, as well as the rehiring of fifteen project positions within TCSD to support the eventual reopenings when allowed by the state. To say that budgeting in this COVID environment has been challenging is definitely an understatement. Um, but staff continues to work closely with our team of consultants and monitoring our local economic trends. In a few weeks, the sales tax results for the third quarter will be released by the state and will, will be used to update the mid-year budget projections, which will be presented to the council in February. And this concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody have any questions? Nope. It's remarkable report. I mean, in light of everything, and it just, again, shows the, um, importance of being meticulous and planning ahead. And we did plan ahead, which is really, you know, what saved us, that and the fact that, um, it wasn't as bad as we were, you know, we feared it would be. Um, but, you know, we always, I think, um, make, make, uh, grander, um, assumptions for, you know, we want to err on the side of caution always, and so that was wonderful. So, um, do we have any comments?
Uh, we do not.
No comments? So if there are no questions, I'll accept a motion.
Uh, so moved. Great job.
Yep, second.
Okay, motion and a second. And could we please have the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Protam Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
All right. We can get going and get home maybe before the game is over. So we have commission reports this evening. So Eric, I see your smiling face on the right-hand side of my screen, even though it is just a picture. How are you?
Excellent. How are you?
Good. What do you have for us this evening?
Well, the, uh, Community Services Commission met, uh, virtually on October thirteenth and is scheduled to meet again virtually November ninth at six. Uh, at our last council meeting, Don Nadamiak provided the holiday event preview, which is an outstanding and safe, uh, slate of in-person and virtual events that the city is offering this coming season. We're offering a press, we're issuing a press release regarding the Fourth Annual Halloween Home Decorating Contest. This was our joint collaboration with the city of Marietta. I wanted to note that I personally visited all thirty-one Temecula homes. Right? And at a challenging time for so many, I was very, very impressed with our citizens sharing their Halloween spirit. If you're able to, I encourage everyone, take your family, check them out. And lastly, in November, please visit temeculaca.gov forward slash events for the full holiday lineup with specific dates and times. Stay tuned for more info by following us at, at Temecula Parks and Rec on social media. Any questions for me?
Did you trick or treat every place you went?
I did not. I only went out one, one time, because there was a sign that we couldn't read.
Oh, so it was more of you was a drive-by then, huh? Drive-by tour?
Correct.
Excellent.
And, and I was able to drag my wife and, uh, high school senior daughter out for family fun night.
Good for you. Good for you. All right, so let's go Planning Commission next, Linay.
Hello?
Hello, how are you?
Good. We've been busy with Planning Commission and last week we had a meeting and Linfield Generations, we voted on extending their time for a year for their building. It's amazing that it's been, I think it's been three years since we voted on that. So kind of crazy how fast that's gone. So anyway, we voted on extending that time for them. And that actually because of the state will be until March fifth, twenty twenty-two. They will be extended because they were given an extra six months with the state because of COVID. The other three items that we voted on are regarding Roy Paul Ranch. And we were able to vote on those for thirteen single-family lots and a hundred and four single-family lots. And then another fifteen single-family lots. And also including water basins there. So we're excited about Roy Paul Ranch and what's happening there. And if you haven't been down there to see, it's kind of amazing how much has already happened there. So that is what we've been up to. And we have some, a special meeting coming up in November along with our regular scheduled meeting. And that's what I got. Any questions?
Busy. In spite of everything, very, very busy.
All right, everybody votes.
Hey, yeah, get out and vote. Thank you, Linay.
All right, you're welcome.
All right, Mr. Sullivan, saving, saving.
Hi, how are you?
Saving the third for last.
There you go. Thank you. We addressed two recommendations from staff. The first one was excessive speed filed by my neighbors, so I abstain from that discussion or vote.
They weren't reporting you, were they?
No.
Okay.
It's further down the street.
That's what it sounded like at first, but okay.
Yeah, I know, well. And then the second one, we reviewed recommendations. There's a child that requires a special bus to pick him up due to mobility limitations. And unfortunately, they live on Capper Boom Court and it's right at a turn and there's fire hydrant, light posts. The one spot that the bus can go safely seemed to have residential parking a lot. And so the child was not able to be picked up safely and taken to school. So staff recommended that that curb be changed to a yellow. And the commission approved it and it's heading your way. And go Dodgers.
And go Dodgers is right. Okay, Mr. City Manager, I must go public safety first, right? Public safety first.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Rigali, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you, Mayor Protem. Council, good evening. It's good to join you. For those of you who have not met, my name is Mark Rigali. I'm newly assigned lieutenant here to the Southwest Station. It's certainly a pleasure to be here. I will tell you for the first time in my career that I'm actually working in the same city where I live, which is really, really nice. And so I'm happy to be here. I'm currently overseeing all of patrol operations for the Southwest Station and also maintaining our important relationship with the Pachanga Tribe, which I've done in a previous assignment for four years. I was the liaison for our department to the twelve tribes across our county. A very complex but rewarding assignment that I did for four years and made a lot of good relationships. So I continue to work with our friends at the Pachanga Tribe here. Captain Hall's asked that I read for you the stats for the month of September. So I know the game's on, so I won't belabor the point. I'll go ahead and jump into this. Calls for service for the month of September were six thousand, six hundred and seven. File numbers that were generated, this number includes calls for service, deputy-initiated activities as well as all traffic citations. Jump into traffic statistics. There were one thousand eighty-five traffic citations for the month of September. Previous month was one thousand three hundred and seven. Twenty-two DUI arrests were the previous month, saw forty-three arrests. Traffic accidents were fifty-four. And the previous month had fifty-five traffic accidents. Special teams statistics, this includes POP, SAT, HOT and BST, programs that I know you're all familiar with. Felony arrests that were onsite, twenty-four, previous month were eighteen. Felony arrests were ten, the previous month saw seventeen. Misdemeanor arrests onsite at fifty-three, previous month arrests were sixty-nine. Misdemeanor arrest warrants were sixty-six and the previous month were one hundred and eleven. From our Investigations Bureau, the detectives, total cases assigned for the month of September came in at thirty-four, the previous month saw thirty-one. Total cases closed were seventy-six, previous month were twenty-eight cases closed. Statistics from the mall, calls for service came in at eighty-four, previous month seeing seventy-three. No change in the felony arrests or filings for either month. Those were both zero misdemeanor arrests. Files were one in the previous month saw two misdemeanor arrests. Volunteers statistics, we had, Southwest Station had a total of six hundred and eighty hour volunteer hours slightly up from the previous month of five hundred and ninety-one.
That's great, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for myself? And I believe Captain Hall is also on the line as well.
Captain Hall, how are you? Any questions, anyone? All right then, gentlemen, thank you very much. Keep up the good work. All right, Mr. City Manager, what do you have to report this evening?
You know, Madam Mayor Protem, just, just one quick thing. And I say this with all humility, but that last item that Jennifer shared, I couldn't let it just go by without saying something about that. Budgeting in this environment has been incredibly challenging. Forecasting in the springtime on the beginning of a global pandemic was impossible. But you saw the numbers, you saw how things were bad, but they weren't as bad as they could have been. But the point I really wanted to make was Temecula's, one of our hallmarks has been our fiscal stewardship. And for thirty years, I've been here for twenty-five, that has been something that we put a great deal of effort and energy and pride into. And you don't just weather quarter two in a global pandemic because you got lucky and you did some things right. You weather things like that by doing things over the last three decades very, very well. And this city with the support of the City Council and the finance staff, we've done a lot of things in the right areas for the right reasons and investing in irrevocable trust, our staffing, our lean staffing, creeping obligations. I mean, I could go on and on, but doing those things and committing to those things set us up to weather that second quarter the way we did. And I expect us to weather quarter three, quarter four just as well. So I just didn't want that to go by the wayside because this city and the City Council has been managing our finances very, very well. We've been very good fiscal conservatives all along and very proud to be a part of this team, so thank you.
Well, you know, it doesn't go unnoticed, thank you, Aaron, for everything you do. I brag about the city all the time. I know my colleagues do as well. And our, you know, our fiscal security over the years, and I have been here thirty years, so not in the council seat, but in Temecula, actually thirty-one. And it's just amazing what, you know, staff and our city council leadership has been able to do over those years and to see the city grow in the way that it has into the beautiful city, safe, you know, family-friendly. And I couldn't be more proud of you and our staff and our residents for being responsible and very, very kind people. So thank you, everyone. So anything, Peter?
Yes, Madam Mayor Protem and members of the council, we have one item to report from closed session, and that is with respect to the acquisition item for the easement. The council set fair market value and directed the staff to make an offer to purchase that. And there's no action to report on the litigation item, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Then if I could have a motion, we will adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and go Dodgers.
Bye-bye.